Twenty Town Planning Commission, please come to order. I'd like to welcome everyone here to seating. Would you please stand to the pledge of the flag, please? George, would you lead?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with every and absolute power.
Let the records reflect the members that are here this evening. The commission members should have received the draft minutes of June 17, 2019. Is there any corrections or additions to those minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
They may just accept the minutes.
Okay. Hallie, second it.
Second.
All those in favor, if you'd like to say an aye.
Aye.
Pooch. Carrie, thank you. Deligations and action items for tonight. Maryland Compassive Care and Wellness Preliminary amended site plan presentation. Jim, would you lead us off on that?
Sure. I know you had a preliminary plan in your packet a couple of months ago, but there have already been a number of comments issued, approval letters issued, and revisions made based on the initial comment letter, so there was a revised plan in your packet again this month. And Randy Peckus from BPR is here this evening to go over the highlights with us or respond to any questions on it. As I said, we've received a number of approval letters so far, but there's still a handful that are pending. So with that, probably best to let Randy speak to where we are on the plan so far.
Okay.
Please go to the...
It's a fairly simple plan. I mean, there's no buildings, no structures going on. It's all concrete pads and further HVAC units and all the machinery and equipment. I would say, geez, there's maybe a dozen or so of these generators and types of equipment, and they're kind of around the perimeter, the outside of the building. So it was a little bit of a shortened agency review because there's no building, like building offset. There's a lot of the zoning really didn't apply. So anyhow, we have, it's all the environmentals we submitted it to and a couple miscellaneous other county planning, county development review. Engineering had nothing to say. Of course, state had nothing to say. We're gonna have a public sidewalk out of Locken 140, but we kept it out of the SHA right away. And we're gonna get an access, public access easement from the property owner, and that will make it contiguous, our sidewalk, we'll have our sidewalk in. I don't know of the, say, dozen or so agencies, I'd say we have at least half, maybe more, and we're probably pretty close to the rest of them. So I don't know if you got, you have the plan in front of you. I've been making corrections since I handed it in. I've been getting feedback from sediment control, and we got a couple of letters back, so there's some updates already. They are out there right now, just getting set up for the, to start putting these pads in, constructing these pads. They got an access, stone access road to get behind the building, and they got some sediment controls up, and we're gonna do the rest by plan here as soon as we can get a permit. So I don't know if there's any...
Okay. Is there any reason why the sidewalk stops short going west then to the property line? Was, I noticed on the drawing, it was, it wasn't to the property line.
Yeah, because there's, because it's a pretty good slope there, and if the sidewalk has to stop short because they're gonna have to grade a supporting slope that'll go to that property line, they won't be able to, or they'll have to go in those other people's property with the grading.
Okay.
You know, so it's a vertical thing there. It flattens out fairly fast, but they're at the end.
That would be...
Who will be grading?
You mean...
On the slope.
Well, they're not, that's why they're stopping it short. They're not going past the slope, so they don't have to grade that.
Well, who will have to put that in eventually?
Jim, can you answer that? Is that gonna be part of Flowserve?
Right, on the west side, that would be, that would be if Flowserve comes back to the table for another site development plan, that we could, and again, my expectation would be, just as we requested sidewalk to go in front of this property, if Flowserve comes back to the table for, you know, an additional building or some renovation that requires a site plan, we'll ask them at that point to continue the sidewalk, you know, at least to a point where pedestrians can walk along 140 and then access the building, you know, through the parking lot or something like that. So at that point, it would be contingent on them to make the connection. And if we do have the easement over that area, that makes it a little bit easier to construct when we get to that point. And same thing at the opposite, although there's not, it doesn't end, you know, as short on the park end, but same thing, you know, once this sidewalk goes in, I would expect the city would then be the next, the next property owner to fill the gap in the sidewalks by going from the park entrance by the football field...
Right, yeah.
Where the sidewalk ends now, to go across that little length to make the connection in front of Maryland Compassionate Care.
And while you're talking, can you fill us in a little bit about storm management? Why is there such an issue now? Is it just because of the additional pads, or is it because of additional parking?
It's primarily because of all the pads for the HVAC units. There's gonna be over 5,000 square feet disturbed, and there's gonna be new impervious created with those pads. And of course, the side, pardon me, the sidewalk being added in the front has kind of thrown a little bit more storm water management into the mix as well, and I understand there's a swale under development to address that front sidewalk as far as...
Not a swale, it's called, it's called a grass strip disconnect. I know it seems a little, it seems a little, you know, there's not that much impervious, but there's only one rule. You're either disturbing over 5,000 square feet or you're not. If you're over 5,000, whatever impervious surface you do within there, you have to treat storm water management. So that's why we got kind of hung up in that. Now, the front sidewalk there, I mean, yeah, it would be hard to believe that that has to be treated, but technically by M.D. rule, you have to do it.
So four foot of sidewalk, five foot of grass?
Right. Five foot, well, I made it five and five. Either way, yes, yes, that's exactly the idea there.
So storm management is the only, is that the only thing holding us up so far, or is there other agencies?
We are waiting for CDM to finish up their storm water management review. I think Randy's been working with Soil Conservation District on...
I've pretty much got them wrapped, him wrapped.
So we're waiting on Brian Snyder's approval from storm water management, and we don't have an approval from a development review at this point, or county grading, or the ADA site compliance. So those are the three or four that we're, that we're missing at this point. So we have, I issued my letter today after talking through a couple of things with Randy. We have Forest Conservation's approved, Flood Plains approved, Roads Engineering, Planning Department, Landscape, State Highway, Public Safety, Fire Protection, Water Resources, and Health Department have all issued their approval letters. So the vast majority are in.
But not all.
Right. And as, I think we've talked about this at previous meetings, we did authorize the developer to do a contingent start on construction in the interior of the building, which has been ongoing for a couple of months now. And they're, they've reached a point on the interior work where they've, they've gotten to the, to the, as far as they can go under that contingent start. So right now, things are, I think they've done all the work they can do without getting inspections through the county or starting to do things to the exterior of the building.
So actually, they're looking for preliminary approval for tonight without all the letters being in?
Well, a couple of options.
Or it continues.
I mean, certainly, it's not on the agenda as this because we did have, when the agenda went out, there were still, there were a couple more gaps on the approval than we have now, so we have gotten a few in since the packets went out last week. But because there were so many gaps, we didn't have it on the agenda as being here for approval. Couple of options, you could issue a conditional approval that would allow us to go ahead and sign off on everything once the remaining letters came in, in the event they did come in before you meet next. We could also work with the county and see if they would, and this, this may present difficulties for the county because without an approved site plan, I don't know if they can do inspections on the interior of the building, but that would certainly be something we could explore, would be to, you know, take any city hold off of work progressing in the interior. I do not know if that presents problems for Carroll County Bureau of Permits and Inspections, though. But that would be something from the city's perspective that we could do also if we wanted to help them keep moving.
Any comments from the commission?
I don't think we should prove anything until all the approvals are in. I mean, that's the way I feel about it.
Hallie?
I think, I think we're jumping the gun on approval.
Okay, so you're not, you're not, the consideration for preliminary is off the table then, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
That said, you know, hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, we'll have letters coming in from the remaining agencies and iron out any last, you know, last issues with the plan. And hopefully, well, before you meet next month, we'll be, you know, the checklist will be completely filled in, and we'll have all the approvals. And at that point, I would think we could consider doing preliminary final in one night.
Okay, that seems reasonable. What does that do to you folks?
I'd like to, yeah, leave you speak about it. It's, so you wanna come up here? It's not the best situation.
Right.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity. So I'm, represent the design builders. Basically, that stops us from doing anything. We've taken the project as far as we can go. I know based on our conversations with the county that they were most concerned with making sure that you guys were satisfied with what you had to be satisfied with to be able to have them give us further permission. We were only allowed to take the project through some rough framing and just some underground work, and if we stop now, it presents a bunch of just inherent problems, not the least of which is I, to, we'd lose a month, a month before we could start up again, very likely losing our schedule, our workforce, finishing the project. And so what we were hoping for is that we're, we're in a position, and ownership's in a position, to do anything that you guys are requiring us to do, and anything that the, that Twenty Town or the county is asking us to do to satisfy whatever the requirements are. And we were hoping that we'd be able to continue along with the ultimate contingency that we couldn't occupy the space unless we satisfied everything that was, was happening here because everybody's got the ability to hold up our CFO. And so we were really trying to, trying to, you know, throw ourselves really at your mercy to be able to say, can we, can we continue to finish out the work on the inside of the, of the project? We've got very little work that's going on the outside, as we mentioned, just concrete pads supporting HVAC units, and that we will, we'll continue, you know, to press forward. As, as Jim said, we're getting letters on a daily basis of approval, and so I would imagine that, it sounds like we should have these three or four letters wrapped up fairly quickly, but the, to lose the month would be, would be quite problematic for us. Especially, I think, one of the issues is that, is this easement, and we don't own the property, or the, or Grassroots doesn't own the property, Maryland Compassionate Care. And so we now have to get this situation taken care of with the owner, which is fine, I just know that that takes time, between having them grant the easement and having the legal taken care of as it needs to, to get to that point where it can be presented to you. So the fear is, is that not only might we be in a position where we'd lose the month, but if that doesn't get taken care of by the submission time, we'd lose yet another month. And so then this pushes the completion of the project off, which, as I say, presents, presents a bunch of problems. So we're just hoping that you'd, you'd consider putting whatever stopgaps into place for us to be able to occupy it and allow us to continue along with, at our own risk, obviously, of being able to finish the project, which they won't grant us permission to do from the, from the county without the rest of the permits in place.
Jim, we look at that maybe, and I know it's just reaching out there, but we could be talking about a few days, we could talk about a few weeks from these other agencies, right?
Right, that's, that's certainly possible, yes.
Have you gotten any feel from the other agencies, whether they're leaning one way or the other, or are they still being closed left?
I mean, mo, all the agencies have provided some, some level of comment, and there are some that are things that really need to be addressed by engineers like Randy and not something that I can speak to as to how complicated it is or not, but, but some of the comments are not, are not things that seem substantial as far as what needs to be changed on the plan. The ADA, for example, talked about the, you know, ensuring that the signage meets ADA requirements, you know, that's not a huge change on the plan. And while I, I know the developer is, you know, frustrated at the length of time that the process is taking, I guess I should point out that, you know, there are some agencies that did not comment until the middle of this month. So, you know, things do seem to be moving more slowly than is typical with this particular plan. I, you know, it's unusual to see a plan come in and comments not come back out within a month. But, you know, we've had, we have a few agencies on the checklist that, you know, the first comments that were received were, you know, July 17, July 11, July 12, that, that's the first that the engineer or the developer heard back from any of the review, from some of the review agencies. So it does seem to be moving at a slower pace than is typical. And I suppose that if, if we want to consider some kind of compromise, that maybe the interior work be allowed to continue, if, assuming, assuming we can reach agreement with, with the county on, you know, what can be, what can be done without having an approved site plan. You know, if, that way, it's, you know, it's work that's within the building. I don't think, I don't think there's ever been a question of, you know, do we want them to build out the rest of the building or not? I think we certainly support that, you know, we want to put the rest of the building into productive use. So I don't think that's the question, it's just, you know, can they, at this point, can they keep going on the interior? And then any exterior site-related stuff maybe has to wait the, the additional month until these agency ref, yeah, approvals come in. So that might be a compromise to consider.
If we do a continuous on getting these letters in, that could be another two weeks. That means you'd still have a delay until those letters come in.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes. And all these, well, all these, all these review letters and approval letters are focused on the site, not the interior of the building. That's, that's why I'm suggesting that interior work could be allowed to continue without compromising the exterior of the site, which is what we're really concerned about.
Is that possible, Randy, or want we wanna address that?
Yes.
Could be worked out?
Yeah, we, we could absolutely continue. That would be, that would be very favorable for us if we can continue working on the interior and not touch anything on the outside whatsoever until we got all the approval letters that, that you needed. Right now, they won't let us do any more on the interior at all because it's, it stopped, it stopped right now.
Jim or Jay, what is, what position does that put us in by doing that? I mean, I mean, we're asking the county to do something we normally don't ask them to do, and I don't want to be setting any precedence either.
Right. Well, the county has a contingent start work that they use for other sites. I had not, I was not aware of it prior to conversations with the county for this particular What the county, my understanding is what they will typically authorize with the contingent start of work is work going up to the level of any inspections, and then it stops from And again, I can't speak for the Bureau of Permits and Inspections, but if they are waiting for our okay to let them do inspections, we could do that for the interior of the building without compromising, you know, the exterior of the site, which is what storm water is about, and grading, and ADA site compliance. You know, those things wouldn't be affected by work that goes on inside the building.
So is it, does, does the town have any risk by allowing them to go forward? Do we, do we assume any risk by allowing them to go forward on a contingent?
As long as they're not, they would not be able to obtain a use and occupant, use and occupancy permit until everything is, is done and all the approvals are in. So it's kind of at the developer's risk if they move forward, and something that, while it certainly is unlikely that something from one of these agencies would result in some change to the interior, that would be at the risk of, you know, for the developer.
They have two more approvals for us, preliminary and final.
Right.
So they still have to come back before us either one time or at least two if we combine the preliminary and the final. So that's September, or, yeah, it'd be the 26th, August 26th, the next, our next meeting.
That's kind of what I wanted to follow up on, is just to make sure I have it right, and we're all talking about it right, that even if you gave contingent approval right now, you're giving contingent preliminary approval.
Right.
So there's an anticipation that these letters are gonna come in, and there's still gonna be a submission, and you're still gonna see it again. So if you look at that as what's going to happen no matter what, are you talking about you're not gonna allow them to move ahead until they get final approval? Because that's the way this would be heading, is that if you're not giving preliminary approval tonight, maybe next month, maybe you give preliminary and final, but maybe not, and now you're not held up for 30 days, you're held up for a significant... I guess what I'm short-circuiting to is that I think the approval process is one thing, but the building process in their mind and in ours might be something different, that you're really not talking about, even if these letters, let me start over, if you had these letters in hand right now, they wouldn't be getting final approval.
Right.
And they'd still be in the same situation they're in, and they'd still want to continue to work. So maybe you don't need to worry too much about whether these come in because it's going to happen, and if they're at risk the entire time, and you ask the question, Commissioner, what happens? As long as you hold the line when they come back in and say, well, we spent all this money and we were at risk, and you say, look, we cut you the break to let you do this, so you're stuck at the end, it's all in your court. So it could be done. But that's why I'm saying is that I'm not sure that the timing's gonna work out, that you might not be able to give final, and you won't, don't want to make your entire plan on the fact that, well, we're gonna give final at the same time, what if that doesn't happen? Now you're really putting them behind the eight ball.
I'm still leaning for a continuous on the letters than I am for the approval to continue to, and that's not for us to give the approval, that's the county.
But what does that mean, I guess, is like, if, if we went with that? The letters would come in, and then you would have given them preliminary approval, but with preliminary approval, you would still allow them to continue?
Continue, right.
So they wouldn't have to have final approval, they just need preliminary?
Well, they need final to get to U N O.
Right.
So we still have the final.
And that's, nobody's debated that, right? I mean, that's, that's no matter what, you have to have that.
So what, so make it simple. What do, what do you suggest that doesn't set a precedence for the future?
Well, we're always, everything's different, so we can always argue that it, you know, we have always tried to be friendly because we're small enough that we can make individual decisions. And I'm not sure that just because you're allowing somebody to continue creates any precedent. The precedent that we don't want to avoid is that you're allowed to occupy and use without a U N O. And for our, I mean, speaking right out in public here, is that the more money and time and things they can invest, the more incentive they have to make sure that everything's done because they want their U N O, because now they can't recoup anything until it's operational. So the more you let them do, the more leverage you have. So I think it's, I see it two ways. Either you say, we're gonna give, we want you to continue to allow them to build, and we'll worry about our approval process when it happens.
That's preliminary approval.
Right.
Yep.
Or if you wanted to take a medium step, saying, I really want to see these comment letters, and once we get those, you can continue. But I've never heard discussion that they wouldn't be continued once they got that. So whereas, I guess I'm looking at is, there's no harm to us either way. And I don't see a precedent, because I think we've done this before. If there was a precedent, I'm pretty sure I could think of back to other places where we have.
Okay. I'm open for something here, guys.
Is that one question? Is there anything that you're gonna cover up in the operation of the interior? Cover up any electrical work, or?
Well, the idea would be that we would continue along till we can complete the inside with whatever they, whatever the county would allow us to do. So even, even if we were able to, even if we were able to finish the entire inside and then have to deal with the outside after the fact, it's, it sounds like we're so close that's not going to happen anyway, but we would stop at the inside and we would do what we had to do on the outside because basically...
You'll get all your inspections.
We'll get all of our inspections, absolutely. Because basically, the only thing that we have left to do on the outside of this is anything that's required from a landscaping perspective or a storm water management perspective, and the concrete pads to set the mechanical equipment. And of course, that just gets hooked up through, through the walls, that has nothing to do with closing anything off at that point because everything would be stubbed out in place. So, so we would do nothing on the outside whatsoever?
Just so you know, there, I mean, there's some more behind-the-scenes cogs, is that even if you were here to give them final approval tonight, we still have the PWA that we have to get done, you know, water allocation, easement, sidewalk, all the things that normally are done, that's still part of the process before you would get a U N O. So there is more to be done that if we just told them, you gotta get all this done before you start, it's not 30 days. So we'd probably have to come up with some accommodation.
Okay, so what's the wishes of the commission?
Preliminary approval until they get complete...
Excuse me?
I'm in favor of a preliminary approval now, tonight, until they get all their reviewers in and so forth. It's all been approved.
Okay.
Based on the fact that we don't have any risk with it, I mean, I think letting them go ahead and do the inside work really doesn't, as Jay said, it doesn't really...
Preliminary will allow that. Preliminary will allow that.
Okay, well, let me get a second on that first.
You got a second?
Yeah, we got a second. So, so now, to understand what you're saying, George, we're giving the preliminary approval tonight, right?
That will allow them to work inside until they get comments from the...
We got two different things here going. Preliminary approval is one thing, but giving them permission to work inside is another thing. We can't combine the two in that same motion. Now, we can give them approval to continue on and then hope by next month, we can go ahead and give them the approval on the preliminary. ahead and give them the approval on the preliminary.
All right.
But I think what they're really asking for at this point is approval to continue their work. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Now, would you amend your amendment, your motion?
I'll go along with that.
And would you amend your second?
Second.
Now, we all understand what we're doing, we're asking, we're giving them approval to continue inside work.
Right. We got any inspection from Carol County?
No, they got to do inspection. Any work done inside's got to be done by the, inspected by the county.
They're not inspecting anything, though.
Yes, they are. If they do plumbing before they close the walls up, electrical has to be inspected. And they, they have, that's a different process from what we're allowing. We're allowing them to do the work, they still got to follow the code of the county with inspections. You guys with me on that?
Absolutely.
Jim, I'm right, right?
Correct.
Okay, we're correct.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay.
Let's restate it so that, you're basically saying they can continue if the county will allow them to continue, and they can get all the stuff interiorly done, but they got to get the permits, inspections, and everything.
Right.
And we understand that, we're just saying, okay, but as Jim said, he's got to get the county to say that's okay.
Right. But he can say that now if we give the approval here as the commission.
Right, you're, you're authorizing me to go to the county.
We're authorizing Jim to go to the county, request this. So if the county says no, that's a whole different story then.
Yeah, different fight to fight.
Yes, sir.
So we all understand what we're, what we're doing here. Is there any comments from the floor? Claire, any comments?
No.
Okay. All right. I don't know if I can repeat this, get it right or not, but we're giving them approval to continue to work so that the code officer can talk with the county. Well, you put it in, you put it in, wait.
Commission member Naylor moved to approve continuance of interior renovations pending county approval.
Sounds good.
Buy that.
All right. All those that favor that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Go back to work.
Appreciate it.
Pardon me? Lift the county license, right.
So can you follow up with how next month's going to happen while they're here?
Yeah, let's do.
Assuming, assuming all the comments are satisfied and all the approval letters are in, we now will have preliminary and final approvals will still be needed.
Right. Everything's in place, that'll happen next month, if everything's in place.
If we would, can I just ask a question? If everything's all in place, if it's on time, we could get preliminary and final at the same meeting?
It's possible. It's, it's possible. I can't say it's yes, but it's possible.
Just trying to set an expectation.
Okay, not to get, not to set any precedence. All right, we good?
Thank you, sir.
All right. Next item on the agenda, comments on pending PZA, BZA case, 2019 to 11. Jim, you want to bring us up to speed on that?
Okay, I'll find it in my packet here. There you go. So it's getting to be a kind of a routine here, yet another family daycare, Board of Appeals application. This one is on Huntinghorn Street. And in your packet was a copy of the Board of Appeals hearing application. The applicant's...
Yeah, I got it.
...a plat showing the property.
There it is.
Descriptions of, of, you know, samples of the schedule, description of the areas that they're going to use, and a floor plan. Rather, rather thorough application this time around, so just your opportunity to comment as a group as to, you know, if there's anything in particular you would like the Board of Appeals to take into consideration when they review this, or if you'd like to make a recommendation one way or the other, is your opportunity to do so.
I took the opportunity to drive by the property, and I didn't see any parking or dropping off issues like there might have been on some others. As far as our end, I don't see any issues, but I, I guess I really have a concern how one person can take care of 10 kids. And I guess that's up for the county or the health department who regulates that. But that just seems like a lot of obligation for one person, especially in this case where there's a big swimming pool in the backyard. Even though it's fenced in, but the whole backyard's fenced in, but as far as zoning, as far as our end, how's the rest of members feel? Anybody else a chance to drive by? And I hate to say this, I got lost going and coming.
If, and I'll, I'll just throw this out, if the, if the presence of a swimming pool is of specific concern to the commission, that could be something that you could comment to the Board of Appeals on to advise them to get clarification on any safety aspects relative to the pool. For example, to ensure that there is a removable ladder, or a locking gate on the ladder, or, you know, things of that nature that would ensure that there's an appropriate effective barrier to entry to the swimming pool. You know, things like that, you could, you know, this is your opportunity that if you want to make sure the Board of Appeals thinks about that, you could, you know, comment that it was noted the swimming pool was in the rear yard, and that the applicant should address the safety related to the swimming pool. Something along those lines would certainly be reasonable.
Anyone have any comments?
Above ground pool, or?
Above ground pool.
The ladder, it's about all they're supposed to move at.
Well, it's, I couldn't see from the fence, I just noticed a pool. Anybody else, anybody have a comment, or do we want to make a recommendation?
Let's draw it to their attention. Yeah, I think the whole thing needs to be part of the...
All right, well, I'd like to recommend that we give them a favorable recommendation, but also mentioned that we're concerned about the swimming pool, above-ground pool in the backyard. Can I get a second to that?
Second.
Get our comments. Any comments from the floor?
There's no pool in our plans, right?
I didn't see one.
No, they didn't show it.
It's not shown on the, it's not shown on the...
It's not.
It hasn't shown on the plans.
So all those in favor, favorable of that recommendation, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Carrie, thank you. I get lost in the streets back here. Ready for the next one, Jim?
Next up, all righty, we've got a, in your packet was a, a single sheet kind of sketch site plan for 5245 Tony Town Pike, and as you know, the construction of a non-residential building is one of the triggers for the site development plan process. So this evening, Mr. Jack DeGangi, who's interested in, in acquiring the, the building on the site there, and erecting a, a pole building on the, on the gravel portion of the site, is here to talk a little bit about his operation, and the request is to waive the site, site development plan requirement, because there is no subdivision involved, no new streets, or public infrastructure is involved in this one. So, and it, the building would be on what is already a compacted gravel area, so as far as stormwater management goes, there wouldn't be any additional impervious surface created by the new building. So that's why it's a potential candidate for a site development plan waiver. And with that, I'll, Mr. DeGangi, describe his operation, if that's all right.
Okay, before we start, come on up, come on. Besides the posting, was any of the neighbors or anybody else notified of this?
There was not, there was not a mail sent out to neighbors like we do with the Board of Appeals, or a, I'll call it an administrative variance, where somebody's looking for a departure from the usual setbacks or something. We did, I did hear from one of the adjacent property owners, Mr. Harner, who owns the farm to the rear, and he pointed out to me something I was not aware of previously, and there is a 20-foot wide strip of the farm that connects to Route 140 between what used to be the showroom building from Lance Chevrolet and the, the service building that's now Rockland Machine Company. So I was not aware of that previously, and the, the sketch plan that Mr. DeGangi sent in pretty much stops on the left-hand side or the west edge of the property. You can see the concrete island very slightly overlaps that property boundary, and that's where the little strip owned by Mr. Harner would be.
Can you bear with us just a second here? If we look at, on this drawing here...
Yeah, we can see it.
Can you, can you point it out?
That's handy.
I don't see a strip, George.
Okay, it's, um...
It's yours on here.
Yeah, it's, um, let's see, the, okay. The first, um, okay, so working west from Harney Road, we've got the old Sobel Inn, and then a house, a field, and then central Maryland Sun Rooms. The next building is the building we're talking about.
Right.
At 5245.
Right.
And then, it's kind of faint, but you can kind of see the little concrete island. There's a break, there's a driveway that's like at the darker shade of pavement, and pretty much right where that darker shade stops is where this 20-foot piece of the farm connects to Route 140. So it's between what used to be the showroom and what used to be the, the service building, but closer to the showroom.
So that's an easement, that's an easement all the way from the farm to the, to 140?
It actually looks like it's a fee simple piece of property. It's, it looks to be part of the farm parcel.
Is it a part of the farm?
It's right away here, though.
Oh, that's, that's, um...
20 foot right away, as mentioned.
I wouldn't be a part of the farm.
And I think that, I think the right away from what Mr. Harner was describing was given to this property on the farm, as part of the farm property.
I'm glad you get your big picture.
He started sitting right there.
Yeah.
Okay, so how...
But where's the 20-foot right away?
It's right there.
Let's hear what he has to say, what the, and then let's see where this plays a part, how this plays a part in that, if it does or doesn't.
Hi, my name's Jack.
Sorry about the interruption.
Um, I don't think it does play a part, because it's actually off the property line from, from what I gather from Jim earlier this evening. My wife and I are in negotiations with the current owner to purchase the property, and I have an environmental company, I've had it for 18 years now, so we clean up groundwater and soil. Just offices will be stored there, will take over the current, or the, yeah, the current building that's there. And then my wife and I also own a small trucking company, dump trucks, and she's got contracts with Lehigh Cement and some other ones. So what we would like to do, and we negotiated with the owner that we were interested in purchasing the property as long as we could put up a pole building, or a pole, a building 75 by 45 to store our dump trucks inside. We currently have four, we're looking at, we actually ordered a fifth one. So this building is under the 5,000 square foot plant, site plan development, so that's why we went with the 45 and 75. So we would have at least three to four trucks inside the building, and then maybe one part outside the building behind the current building that's there now. So we're hoping that we get a, a waiver to do the full site development plan, because I went through that, and the cost, you know, I, I developed some property up in Pennsylvania, and the engineering said it was 15,000, that's what we budgeted, and time it came in, we were at 45,000, it was three times more than, and of course, with that engineering came in all the other things behind that engineering, and we, we just don't have the capital to invest, and it wouldn't be feasible for us to purchase the property if we couldn't put that building up.
And these dump trucks, are they tandem axles, how many, how many?
They're tri-axle dump trucks.
Tri-axles, okay.
Yeah.
And they're, I imagine they're all diesels?
Yes, sir.
Okay, how is this sooned?
General business.
And it used to be...
I thought it was restricted general business.
No, the restricted general business is out on East Baltimore Street between Merwin and Fairground.
Okay.
The trucks normally leave in the morning, and they come in in the afternoon, so they're not in and out all day long, leaving, leaving, back in the afternoon. And there's currently three, three people in the office, so that'd be myself, my wife, and another lady that works in our office, Doc, who buy that building that's currently there.
So how does this fit into general business?
And of course, our code doesn't list trucking company as either industrial or general business. The general business district allows things like, like, you know, truck sales and service, farm equipment, sales and service, you know, but a, a trucking company, it's, it's really up to me to interpret the code and see where it would fit best, and I could see something like this. As far as the impact involved, I don't think that the intensity is any greater than other uses in the general business district. Certainly, if, if you can service equipment like this in the general business district, you can have these kind of vehicles going in and out of a site. You know, if I can open a, a shop that services dump trucks, and that's a permitted use in, in the district, I would think that, you know, operating the trucks, you know, from a site would be a permitted use as well.
Sounds logical, yeah.
In the restricted industrial district, there is a truck term, a trucker motor freight terminal is listed as a permitted use in the industrial district, and I don't think this quite fits with, with what you would call a, a motor freight terminal.
I know, right.
So I think as far as the intensity of the use, that it's compatible with general business.
There's trucks that, there's trucks that there now.
There's one or two trucks sitting there now, yeah. So service on these vehicles will be inside the building or outside the building?
Well, we don't typically do service, our service work gets done by East Coast, East Coast and Union Bridge, so all our work, all our maintenance gets worked there, and also KW. We purchase all new trucks, so if it's warranty work, it would be done at KW dealer, either in York or Land O'Quinn. If they need service, we usually get it done, we always get it done, over in Union Bridge at a repair shop.
If, if we would grant a, a site plan waiver, what part of this would, it still would go through county for county inspections, right?
Right.
They'd have to to put the building up. So what about runoffs from the truck? Where would your, any of your contaminated oils, your salts from all the, in the winter when you're parking there, where, where would all them drippings, where, how would you handle that? Would you have an oil trap? How, how do you, how would that be handled?
Fortunately, we haven't had any, we, we have all new trucks. Our oldest trucks are 2015 that we purchased, new. We have two, 2018, we'll have a 2019, and a 2016. Salt would be the same thing as we, we pull our car up. I mean, we wouldn't do anything, we would just park the, park the car there.
Well, a lot less salt on the car than what it is on a, on a dump truck, especially traveling the roads, and...
And then normally, what we would do... And then normally what we would do is, we would like to put the trucks inside the building, depending on the weather and everything else. If, if the roads are bad, we do not allow our trucks to go out, so. Or they will go out later after the state highway and, and all the other counties assault at the roads and do what they needed to do.
So the residents that live just down the street, there wouldn't be any issue with the trucks starting up in the morning, sitting there warming up? Or you don't anticipate anything like that?
The trucks usually.
A truck is no, a diesel is noisy in the morning when it warms up.
But the, these newer ones are pretty quiet, actually. Hassle is the DEF, that diesel exhaust fluid. But we don't have the Jake brakes or the big straight pipes and you hear all these big Jake brakes going down. None of our trucks have that. And I've seen two or three or four trucks sitting there and I know they start up early in the morning, so I don't think it would cause a, any issues with any neighbors that are, that are currently there.
Comments from the commission?
No, there's no comment here. I don't see, it, it wouldn't be fit for the property.
Oh, I've got you, okay.
It wouldn't be fit?
It wouldn't, that it wouldn't be fit for, be okay. I'm not against you, I'm not.
Okay, my hearing.
I guess the question is, they're asking for a waiver for a site plan. So are we at a point where we need a site plan on this, Jim, or you think we're close enough where it's basic? I mean, they're under 5,000, we don't have an issue with traffic. I mean, my only concern was, was any contamination. I mean, where are you getting the diesel fuel from? I mean, do you buy, you gotta have a tank here?
That's a good point. I did, I do forget. We have a 1,000 gallon tank that we have currently in, in New Windsor and it's a double-walled tank.
So it's a dike tank kind of?
Not a dike, it's double-wall, right. And there's a warning device on the outside in case there's a leak. We, um, we get our fuel from Griffith Oil and they fill it up twice a week, Mondays and Wednesdays. We haven't had any issues. We've had it for several years now and Griffith Oil's a reputable company, so I don't think that.
Catch pan underneath of it?
Pardon me?
A catch pan underneath of it?
No, for a double, double wall, you don't need that by law. As long as it's under, I think, 1,000, 1,000 gallons, if I expand it to go more, which I, I don't plan on.
Okay. Jim, you got anything else to add before I ask for a vote or something? Okay, I'll, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to give him a waiver, a site plan for the.
Second.
Second, now open for discussion. Any comments from the floor? Okay, all those in favor of giving the, what's the name of your company?
Uh, there's, there's two of them, Innovative Earth Solutions and Transport Services. It would probably be 5D Properties. That's the real estate owner.
Okay. All those in favor of a motion of granting a waiver, Singapore is saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Carrie.
Thank you very much.
Oh, that came in at the right time, didn't it?
Good. Yeah, in color, it was great. All right, ordinance and agreements, none, plenty. Jim, you want to go over your report?
Sure. Uh, let's see. Well, there I did took care of Maryland Compassionate Care and the BZA and the third item, so. We had a meeting at the Tannery Barn site this afternoon. There's been some questions with regard to work at the pavilion and I know the commission had brought that up, um, previously as to some work to enclose the porch in the building and we'll get a little bit more into that when we get down into the discussion, I guess, of active projects where, where it's specifically mentioned on the, on the agenda. But one thing that I did want to call to your attention that I didn't have in my written report was in your packets, was a concept plan that was presented to the mayor and council for the Sewell Farm. That's the kind of aerial view there that we were looking at earlier, tried to identify that little strip of farm. And, uh, and a letter from NVR, or also known as Brian Holmes. Just wanted to kind of keep you up to speed with that. The mayor and council saw this concept plan and they did authorize us to continue discussions with the Sewells towards annexation, developing an annexation agreement. So we're, we're still a long way from having a formal concept plan to present to the commission, but I just wanted to keep you up to speed on where the talks were, were at this point in time. So while the general use is certainly permitted and the, the concept is intended to essentially follow the Carroll Vista model where it would be an age-restricted community and the city would only accept limited infrastructure. We would only accept the water and sewer systems from, you know, from this project. So it would be up to the community association or the management company to maintain the, the stormwater management facilities and storm drains and all of that infrastructure and also the, um, the roads, sidewalks, all of that thing, all of that, very much like Carroll Vista does. So that's the current concept. The, the Sewells had floated the idea of the continuing care idea, something like, uh, I guess a Plum Creek in Hanover or Carroll Lutheran Village here in Carroll County where you have, um, you know, independent living, you know, single-family homes and, and, you know, duplexes and triples and things, but then also kind of an apartment level and assisted living, you know, as, as someone's needs progress that they can move into the different levels. The Sewells found that it was, uh, that there wasn't much appetite for that type of development at this point in time, at least not for this property. So they've, at this point, chosen move, try to move forward with just the age-restricted and following the Carroll Vista model. I don't know that the, council was overall supportive that we continue to explore the concept and, and, you know, continue discussions. I, I think there's still a little bit of hesitancy and concern about it being age-restricted as opposed to just a general development and we're kind of at that point where we need to start coming up with the, you know, potential benefits and potential drawbacks of this type of a project and what it's going to look like for the city in the future. So as I said, we're, we're a long way from having an agreement to put on the table, let alone a concept plan, but it is starting to move in that direction. So just trying to keep you guys in the loop on it.
Our, my first glance at this was the Harney Road issue. I certainly would like to see somewhere towards the back of that development coming out onto 140. Otherwise, at Harney Road and 140, we're going to need a roundabout or a light, just based on two or three months ago, the issue that we had. So somebody needs to be looking at that before we get, you know, too far down the road.
It, it, certainly a project like this is going to warrant a traffic study. And whether the volume of traffic generated from this, when you put it together with all the background that is, that is all the other development ongoing in the city or in the development pipeline, you know, so we would be looking at potential trips from, you know, the remaining phases of Meadow Brook and Meads Crossing and even Copperfield and any other development that we know is, you know, in, in the pipeline. You know, that would all be factored into a traffic study. I, I question the, I guess, the need for a traffic signal at Harney Road just based on the volume of traffic. I don't think we are anywhere close to the level of traffic at that intersection that, that's going to drive a traffic signal. Now, maybe with a project of this scale, you know, if something maybe happens with the Harner Farm as well, maybe now we're talking about the kind of volume that might be coming down Harney Road. But again, if, if we're, as you said, if there might be some access onto Baltimore Street, onto West Baltimore, well, I guess there it's Tony Town Pike, you know, that in itself might reduce the trips on Harney.
Right.
Change how it impacts the intersection, but I think that talk of a light at that intersection is, um, I don't think it's likely that the traffic volume is going to warrant that in the near future. I know people say that that's a dangerous intersection and, and certainly a realignment of it could be helpful, but as far as the traffic counts coming down Harney Road to warrant a light, I don't think we're that close yet. So, and there, there has been some discussion about as we do move forward with, with annexation discussions, obviously annexing the entire parcel would create an enclave of the Harner Farm. That's the parcel behind the one we just talked about. And also a number of homes on Harney Road on the west side of Harney. And there are a couple of properties, the, the last ranch house depicted along Tony Town Pike and Central Maryland Sun Rooms are not in the city limits currently. So if we were to annex the entire Sewell property, we have some enclave issues. So that's something that we really need to delve into and from the planning perspective, I would certainly rather see annexation include at least those properties on the Tony Town Pike side, rather than trying to leave some little slot opens to avoid the enclave. But those are the talks that we'll need to be having going forward. And, and there was some discussion of, well, what if the Harner Farm developed at the same time and could that be the primary entrance to a community like this? So there are all kinds of ideas being kicked around currently. But it is moving forward, so I'll try to keep you guys updated and in the loop as we go forward. And, you know, as, as we do that, certainly your comments are, are as always welcome and will be taken into consideration as we continue the talks.
The Sewell land on the north or east side of Harney Road.
Right.
What about that now?
Right, that is not included in the concept at this point.
I noticed, and it isn't.
Right, so that would be.
It was 14 acres, wasn't it?
Whether, whether we would be talking about annexing that currently or not, I think that, again, annexing the entire farm, especially including that side, now we have even more of an enclave concern with those homes on the opposite side of Harney Road. That is on the opposite side from the Herring Apartments and the side where Tony Town Crossing will be coming along. So again, a lot we need to think about as far as even how we draw the annexation boundary because we could be looking at enclave issues here, so. But yeah, that's, I know initially there had been some talk about possibly doing an assisted living type of, of development on the smaller side, on the east side of Harney Road, and right now that is not part of the concept.
That could change a couple of times yet till it gets annexed and all, that whole thing, probably. It could get changed again, too.
Yeah, yes.
It hasn't been changed once.
Yeah, it, it could. We're, we have a lot we need to, to talk about, so. At any rate, that is, that is moving forward, so.
Okay, then continue on with your construction phase.
All righty, so active projects, Tony Town Crossing has been kind of silent. I know they're working on their preliminary, but nothing has been submitted thus far. Obviously talked about Maryland Compassionate Care and Wellness already this evening. Meadow Brook is continuing to chip away. We've been both with them and Meads Crossing, the pace has been pretty consistent with four to five units a month, so that's a decent pace for us. Creekside, still having some issues with obtaining all the easements that we need to accept all of the infrastructure. I have spoken with the homeowners where there's, where the sewer pumping station is located and they had some concerns with the easement as presented by the developer's attorney and I, I think we just need to have some clarification with them. I think that they're a little, I, I think it's unclear to them exactly what that easement is delineating and they're concerned that it's going beyond what they thought they signed up for essentially when they chose that lot. So I think we just need to clear up some misunderstanding on that one and, and I think they'll, I think that they will execute the easement once we clear that up. Sheets, I was hoping that sometime very soon I'd be able to drop them off the list, but it turns out they reached out to us, inquiring for the, their surety to be released. And when I went back and checked the file, I saw that the last communication that was in there was from about two years ago when we advised them that we were still waiting for their signed stormwater management agreement and that upon receipt of that, we could, we could close their surety and if they asked us to close their escrow account, we could do so. And that was never received. So we followed up with them again and advised them that we still need the stormwater management agreement and provided the copy of it again. So hopefully we will hear back and get that agreement back this time and be able to really close them out finally. So it seems to be a two-year cycle when I look back at the, at the file. We had communication from 2015 asking for the agreement and then we didn't hear anything and then we had communication in 2017 where we again asked for the agreement and now here we are in 2019 and they're asking again and we're asking again. So sooner or later they will want their surety released and their escrow closed badly enough to get us the stormwater management agreement. So, um, let's see. And EVACCO is, is pretty much where we thought Sheets was, in that we just need them to put things in writing to request the closeout. Georgias in New York, still hinging on the water sewer amortization agreement, much like we did for the brewery fire folks, except in the downtown business district. That's part of our incentive program to encourage people to invest in downtown properties was the ability to amortize those water and sewer impact fees over a 10-year period. So that's why Georgias is still on the, on the active list. Meads Crossing is chipping away. There's been a little bit of discussion about the next phase of the project, but very little. They may be moving forward with, um, there's a, a culvert crossing on one of the cul-de-sacs, it's Absicon, I think, Circle, that is right at the edge of what we approved on Phase 1 and Phase 1A. And the construction drawings actually showed a temporary crossing at this water course and Meads is inquiring if instead of constructing a temporary crossing, that they could just go ahead and construct the permanent crossing. So we've told them to go ahead and flesh out the plans to do that and that we would entertain letting them do a, the, the permanent crossing rather than do a temporary crossing and rip it out and replace it with a permanent crossing since there was a, since there was a crossing on the construction plans that we approved. So they're exploring that right now. There's also been some additional communication from the group of residents along Angel Road and Deal Road that I know those of you who have been on board for a little while, we're here for a, you know, a very detailed presentation with regard to the impact of Meads on the surrounding residents in the county. And they've reached out to mayor and council and we've basically reiterated that, you know, those comments will be taken into consideration when the developer comes back for the future phases, but until that time, you know, things. But until that time, you know, things are going to be built according to what was approved for the phases that are already approved. So just kind of to let you know that that group is still active and is looking for their comments to be considered when when we get to that point. But until something is submitted, there's nothing for us to comment on or review right now. And lastly, the Tannery Barn. So, as I started with earlier, I know we have some attendees here this evening with regard to the project. And I know a few of you have commented on noticing when you've driven by that the pavilion has shown work that it's becoming enclosed on the ends and the porch has been enclosed on the ends. And the current plan is to now enclose the building completely. So rather than being an open pavilion, it will be a closed-in building. And I will call to your attention also, there's a a letter that was on the table tonight from the Tannery Barn folks that talks a little bit about that. So at any rate, with concerns about things that have departed from the site development plan and things that departed from what was on the approved building permits, the county shut down activity on the project. And the city, I requested that they not continue forward until after the planning commission had a chance to talk about the pavilion and the pavilion being enclosed and some departures from the site development plan. So this afternoon, there was a meeting held on-site. Commissioner Lance, Mayor Lance, myself, Lionel Stickles and Mike Zep, the county code official and deputy code official, Chairman Parker and myself, met with the developer and their contractor on-site and talked through a number of building inspection and building code-related issues, many of which pertain to ADA compliance with door thresholds and and fire safety and things like that with regard to door widths and pushbars and a lot of minutia along those lines that that needed to be worked through for the barn itself. And then, once we had kind of ironed out what all needs to be done to make sure that the county is happy as far as the Bureau of Permits and Inspections to let things go forward, we moved into the pavilion. So, the pavilion is not going to be considered conditioned space as far as being heated and air-conditioned with permanent HVAC equipment. But that portable chillers or heaters would be used during the times of year that that would be necessary. From the meeting today, I was concerned picturing the types of units that are often seen with with temporary venues like tents and things like that. But it sounds like these units would be all within the enclosed building. So basically, because we have departed from what was on the site plan, I wasn't comfortable authorizing things to continue on to enclose the building until it was vetted by by you guys. So I'm hoping that we can have a little discussion this evening on some of the changes that have happened from the time that the site plan was approved to where we are now and get some direction on where we need to go in order to see the project continue on. Again, the, as we talked about with Maryland Compassionate Care, we certainly need to make sure that all the county building codes are being followed. And, you know, whatever we do tonight does not exempt anybody from not following the building codes. So that will be part and parcel of anything that happens after tonight. But what I'm hoping for tonight is is some direction from the commission, a feel for, you know, is the enclosing the pavilion okay? Do we let them continue work? Do we need to see some additional drawings before we issue a use and occupancy? You know, what should our next steps be as we move forward? And I'll open open it up to any questions or try to answer any questions that I can. And I know the folks from the Tannery Barn and adjacent property are here that may have some questions or comments. And again, I'll call your attention to the letter that was pretty much the result of discussions at this afternoon's meeting, so that kind of summarizes where where they are from the developer's standpoint and, you know, what they intend to do going forward when the project gets going again.
Okay, I guess basically what we're looking at is the end result isn't matching up to what we thought we were giving the approval for. So where we're at this point is how we want to continue. There's a couple of options there.
You want me to go through them?
Go through them, Jim. Because Jim and I talked about the different options, and this is what we're throwing out on the floor.
So sometimes we entertain what we call red line changes when there's a small change to a site plan or subdivision plan that is typically not something that's going to look any different to the layperson. That's not gonna, you know, it's not going to create a new lot. It's not going to create a change to the way the building looks or the way the site functions. Usually, it's some piece of minutia or a small modification that we're just recording to make sure that we have accurate information as to what was actually built. That's that's one option. Typically, those are done for, for, again, smaller type revisions. Another option would be to require an amended site plan. Now, that would bring the engineer back into the picture and cause probably some significant delays while things were revised through an amended site plan. And then, of course, there's basically going back through the process. And when I say an amended site plan, what is happening with Maryland Compassionate Care and Wellness right now, that's an amended site plan, so it's going back through the whole process again. So that would be an option, certainly not one that would be appealing for the for the Tannery Barn folks. Another option would be to perhaps request an addendum showing elevations of the now enclosed building and require that that be submitted before a use and occupancy permit could be issued. So we would have an addendum to the site plan that basically depicts what the final product is. That, along with requiring as-built drawings that would also show things that have been added to the site plan since it was approved. For example, there's there's now a sidewalk off the front door that wasn't included on the site plan. So we could require that before a use and occupancy permit is granted, that they provide us a drawing that shows basically what the finished product was. And those are typically, we do those for site development plans that have stormwater management and for subdivision plans where there's infrastructure involved. We typically get as-built, and that's usually a requirement in their public works agreement. Because there wasn't stormwater management involved here, it's not something that would be an automatic thing. But that would be a way for us to memorialize all the improvements that were made to the site that make it look different than what was approved. So I think the, probably the the compromise that I would recommend that would allow the project to continue forward and make sure that we have, and this is assuming everybody's okay with enclosing the pavilion, of course, would be to require that they provide some elevation drawings. And we would incorporate those into the file. And also to require as-built drawings that would show the additional sidewalk, the the curb that's being discussed to be added to the downhill side of the driveway and things of that nature, so that we've kind of memorialized what the final product is. And that way, if Happy Path is, the Tannery Barn is a huge success and they outgrow it and need to have a bigger venue and sell it to somebody else, now we've got an accurate picture of what we're starting with when the next person comes in to do some other phase of development on the property. So that, again, assuming their support for the pavilion to be enclosed, you know, that would be a way to allow it to go forward and still document the changes and and have some, you know, again, as we talked about with that use and occupancy step, that until we get to that point, nobody can use the property for, you know, its intended purpose until you get that use and occupancy. So we could require that those things be provided before they would get to that step. So those are the kind of things we could get around.
So your latter option would be the least amount of downtime for them, right?
Right, right, we could let that...
And the county, the county would not have any issue with that?
Right, the county has has worked things through with with their contractor as far as the enclosure of of the building. So if the city approves that modified building permit, they're ready to roll with the county. So I was not comfortable doing that without talking to you guys first, because you have commented in past months about how things look different than what was on the approved plan. And, you know, when we got to the point of now, the whole building's being enclosed, I I just could not sign off on that without getting your input on that.
Appreciate your concern. So I guess we got to make a decision, are we satisfied with the pavilion turning out to be a room as part of the building and authorizing Jim to continue process? Or do we want to require a revised site plan?
I should point out that the pavilion and the barn itself, they they have provided fire sprinklers in in both the pavilion and the barn. So that was something that was worked through with the county and and the fire safety. So that is in place already. So because I know we did have a lot of discussion about sprinklers off and on. And while that's really a more building code-related aspect, it did come into play in our discussions when we were talking about there being possibly a tent or, you know, some kind of temporary structure. And the end result was that basically whatever they were going to do was going to be sprinkled to have that occupancy and that use. So that is in place already.
I would not recommend doing a red line based on the magnitude of changes that's been made.
Could we have a, an aerial view and just a rough worksheet of that unit down there? Just so we could see what all is going on, just a rough worksheet made up.
Jim, do you have anything on that already? Or is that something we could get from the county as elevations?
I'm not thinking about going back through all that kind of stuff. Just something for us on a scrap paper with like an aerial view, we'd see the whole thing.
Or elevation would do about the same, wouldn't it?
The 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 site plan that was approved does depict the pavilion being on there to the rear of the barn. So the footprint of that has not changed. It's just that now it's going to be enclosed as opposed to being an open pavilion. That's the major change. That's the big concern.
Now, I've heard a lot about water runoff. How are we controlling the water runoff?
Okay, and and that's that's noted in that letter that was on the table? So from...
Number one point, mhm.
From today's meeting, what was discussed with regard to the water runoff, and I'll just kind of paraphrase, is that before construction is completed, they intend to return the runoff to its pre-development configuration. They're going to add gutters, which are going to discharge at areas away from the downhill property. In addition, there's going to be concrete curb installed basically from, they refer to as the crown of the driveway. But if you've been to the site, there's a point where the driveway drops off significantly towards Route 194. So the curb would start basically where that that slope begins and then you continue along the radius of the gravel driveway to a point that's roughly, I'd say, about a third way around of the way around that radius, so that it would capture any runoff that was basically heading directly towards the downhill property.
What kind of a curb are you talking about that's going to control a downpour?
It would be, it would be concrete, a concrete curb that's...
How high are we talking about? Any idea? I mean, if you get a downpour, is it going to run over the curb?
Right, and that, you know, we could, we could provide the, there's, there's a city curb specification for a commercial curb is usually a flat curb as opposed to like the roll curb that we have in a residential neighborhood. And we could provide the contractor with that spec and ask them to follow that spec. So that, I believe, has an eight-inch curb face.
You had a question, you want to come to the mic and...
Steve Farley, if I can. You know, people were out today looking at the site. You know, our, our concern is the runoff. We've, we've incurred about $12,000 worth of expense at this point in time with a new pool liner. We put a berman, we've put new downspouts and gutters in, and we still got this last rain, over two inches of rain in the basement. We approached Janet on that with the builder, and they said it wasn't their problem. It was my problem. Well, a lot of the conversation tonight's been about stormwater management through all the projects. And this project has no stormwater management. You've essentially taken a hundred-year-old barn and put another barn on top of the same property. So you have two barns on the same property with no stormwater management. And from what I'm hearing, if it's over 5,000 square feet, it's got to have stormwater management. And from what I understand, it was pretty close. And they put sidewalks in that weren't on the original site plan. You know, the, the original site plan has been altered, okay? And they were just under at that time, and now nobody's measured it to see if they're over, okay? And if they are, they just need to do the right thing. All we're here tonight is to do the right thing. We spent the money, we're not looking for reimbursement in the money, okay? We had no choice because our property was being, we couldn't even use our pool. We had to, we had to, you know, put all new drains in, okay? Because nobody was willing to give us any help, and what else were we going to do? So, so I reached out to Jim, Jim said the meeting's here tonight, so we want to come and explain our our issue. But, you know, we're just looking for the right thing to be done. If this is over 5,000 square feet, then stormwater management's got to get put in. That's just the right thing to do, you know? If it's not, then that's my problem. And I've already spent, and I still got to spend more, because I don't know. The groundwater is the issue. This groundwater, when you put two barns on that property, it's not that big a property. That water's got to go one way, and it's going down, and I'm right below them. And that's where that water's going. And so, you know, we need your help. We, we don't know where to turn at this point in time. We spent a lot of money and still have water problems, and...
I know when water comes at you, it's a concern.
Yeah, I can't, I can't, Mother Nature, I mean, with this last rain, I mean, you know, I got two inches in the basement. I've been in that house, been there 219 years. And I've been in it 15 years, and I've never gotten water in my basement until all this started up. And as you know, I was for the project several months ago. I was not against the project. I'm not against the project. All I'm asking them to do is do the right thing. I mean, do the things that are required by law, whatever the county standards, city standards are, to do the proper, the proper drainage. Because stormwater management is, is all, the whole conversation is all about stormwater management.
We'll see that things are taken care of. Jim, can we get someone to do the calculation on this disturbed area? Is, is that their engineer?
That's typically who would do that, yes.
We do empathize with with the Farleys.
He's talking into the mic.
I'm sorry, I said, we do empathize with the Farleys and their situation. Unfortunately, I feel somehow like a perfect storm kind of situation. And what I mean by that is that it's just, you know, our site plan was approved. We did not need stormwater management. We have not gone over the 5,000 square feet because we've stayed, like, you know, for the example, the pavilion, it's just on top of the existing brick wall. The pavilion was presented and approved. So, you know, I'm, like I'm saying, I'm not being, you know, disrespectful of the Farleys. But it's also been a very, very wet year. I mean, things like my contractor and stuff, they couldn't put in septic things. If you look, and I did print out, and nobody's interested, but it's, it's been a very big rainy season. I mean, in this area, you've broken all the records. It's been over two inches more inches of rain. And when they say that, I, the trouble is, I can't admit that, say, hey, yeah, we're all at fault for this. I don't think that's exactly 100% true. And people sometimes only want to hear what they want to say, and it's not being disrespectful. But I, well, but I can't say that it's, you know, it's, it's our fault. I can't say that. You know, it's a... I can't say that, you know, it's a lot of water, I understand that, but it's there at the bottom of a hill, and I'm sorry for that. But, you know, we're gonna try to help here, and unfortunately, I couldn't do gutters until I finished the project. I can't do other things until the project's done. Because it's like saying, look, like, you know, I'm gonna finish it, but I don't have the wall to put it on, the gutter. Does that make sense? I'm not, I'm not done. And I apologize that it's been a project that's kind of a piecemeal project, but it's been a big financial drain on us. And we're just like, they've had financial problems with addressing their issues. But we also had those issues too, so, I don't know. I appeal to you to let us continue so we can finish it, because if you delay it, it's only gonna delay us fixing more of their problem. Which we're trying, I'm hoping this curb, like you're saying, I hope that's the answer. But there, right now, we need to move forward and put the gutters and try to redirect that water. So we're hoping for your support tonight.
Even during the construction, you still need to do something to control the flow, the water flow. Regardless, it's gonna flow downhill, it's something that you need to do on your property to prevent that. Even during the construction that you're doing now.
Well, we were unaware of that, I mean, to be honest, nobody said that from a-
You can't wait till the roof is finished to do something about the runoff. You gotta do something with the runoff now if it's causing a problem.
Well, we've made our suggestion what we're gonna do, and that's what we're gonna stick to, and we wanna do that. But we can't do it unless we can continue, so that's a catch-22 there a little bit, thank you.
Thank you. Hang on, so, Jim, how do we move forward on getting the calculations on the storm management, on the 5,000?
I can contact CLSI.
Excuse me?
I prefer to have a third party instead of CLSI. Do we have a different company? Does it have to be CLSI?
Jay, would you wanna answer?
You have to hire an engineering company.
Fine, I'll hire, because, yeah, we had to do that with the state highway. Unfortunately, there was a little bit of a problem with CLSI, and things happen. They put in inexperienced, as you all know, 'cause you were here when the guy came up, and he was inexperienced, and it just, it just was not a pleasant situation. So that's all, so we'll get another engineer if that's what you need.
Jay?
I mean, I just to comment on the situation, just kinda hearing it. There's a couple ways to look at this, or a couple issues, I guess, the first thing is that it seems that it's hard for you to say yes or no to anything when you don't have plans in front of you to say it's okay. You're hearing some solutions, but they're just solutions and they're not on a plan. And it's kinda unfair for you to make decisions, just as it is for the neighbors to know what the plans are or not for those types of things. And this isn't a new project, this is a project that went before you before, and there were issues where, what was the scope of the project before? And I guess the question you could use to judge this by is, if you knew what was being proposed right now, back then, would you have reviewed it any different? Because that's the issue you run in with piecemeal projects, is you have people who've come in with piece one, and then piece two, and piece three. But if you knew all of it at one point in time, would you have done something different back then? All that being said, maybe you wouldn't have, maybe things aren't that much of a difference, that it wouldn't have made a difference with the sidewalk or the enclosures and things like that. It's, compare it to like compassionate care, which we just did and we allowed them. There's some big differences that you need to highlight, 'cause we talked about precedence before. Compassionate care had a plan, and they just haven't gotten the approvals to do the plan, that's the difference. Whereas this is no plan to tell you what approvals they are. And the second is compassionate care's approval that you gave tonight were all interior things that don't affect the outside, don't affect anyone else, where these things with like elevations and designs and things like that, you are usually very sensitive to that. You'd like to see what they look like so that the neighbors can see what they look like, and you'd like to have their approval on that. And so, you know, I'm aware of that if you put the brakes on things, things slow down as well. But you'd really have to ask yourself, what do we need to see to make yourselves comfortable with approvals that you get? Even if it's piecemeal approvals, do you have things in front of you? Well, there was a letter here with a proposal, is that sufficient enough to make you say, if they do this, we can hold them to that until the next phase, until the next thing? And so, I mean, that's the food for thought that you need to kinda think about.
Okay, wait a minute.
Just one more comment.
On the site plan, originally, I believe they said there was an existing patio in the enclosed area. Well, that was a, it was a barn that cattle walked in and out of, and it was a broken up, whatever remnants were left. I spoke to Tom Stenley, the previous owner, and there was no patio back there. They're including that to keep under the 5,000 square feet, so they don't have to put stormwater management in. So that was put in as a patio, but it's, there was no patio there, I mean, I've lived there. Years in the previous owner will tell you there was no patio there.
There's two, I mean, I don't get the engineer here, but calculation of impervious surface is one thing, but direction of stormwater, when you put a roof and a gutter system, even if it was flat and pervious, and you start directing all that water to a different spot, that's a whole different issue that needs to be looked at.
Yeah, today the gutters are hooked up, but usually they're not. And that water's just going right in my yard.
You live, you live below-
Anytime, the gutters are there.
How large an area does the water cover when it comes down to you?
Well, if you look at the-
Is it just in a small area, a large area, or what?
New sod is completely washed out that I put in in the berm. I put a berm in and sodded it, and the sod is completely matted down, and the berm, the grass is washed away already, and I put sod in. So the amount of water you're asking, I'm sorry?
How high a swale would you have to have to keep the water from running down over your property?
That needs to be controlled by the county.
Well, you can come out and look, I mean, currently, M&amp;J did a contracting right across the street, Jim, M&amp;J put the swirl in right there. And that has helped my pool area, but my basement area has no swirl, and that's just going right over the blacktop. And my yard just goes right down, right into it. So that swirl is probably, you know, this, you know, just, it goes like this, down and then up. You know, it's not a giant berm, but my concern is it's gonna wash away, it's, Mother Nature is what the volume of water will-
Well, a swale, a swale won't wash away.
Yeah, I call it a berm, I'm not sure what a swale, a swale, is that rock or is that ground?
No, it's ground.
It's just ground, okay, okay. So, yeah, so, thank you.
Fun having water coming down across you, 'cause I-
That's right, so that's what has to be remedied.
I had it done once, it's no fun to have water directed over you.
How wide is the area that water runs down to you?
Is it as wide as this room is what we're trying to get at, or is it-
It's the whole house line.
Pardon?
The whole house line all the way-
How many feet, I mean roughly?
Seventy-five feet, eighty, seventy feet, sixty, seventy feet, the side of that burnt house, it's the whole side of the house.
Okay. So the curbing may help some of that. Where are we at at this point?
Well, contract curb is not gonna redirect the water.
Well, we're going back in time though again, you know, and we tried our best to do our site plan, which was approved, right? We put up the pavilion, we did that. Unfortunately, if they're getting some water, as I said, we're trying our best to fix it. But if you shut us down, I mean, you know, my contractors are gone. This bin has over been since, when did we start this, over a year and a half ago? It's been a struggle, I understand that he said the piecemeal thing, but you have to understand, this building is as old as their building. Well, 1900, 'cause it burned to the ground. But, yeah, it would've been a lot easier to tear it down, but we lose the integrity of history. I had 500 people, just like they did, coming through their house for the Maryland House and Garden Tour. It's just, I don't know what to do in the sense that it is a piecemeal project because it's so old. But we're trying our best, we follow our rules, we always meet with Carroll County because of the permits and all that. We've made the decision to have it, they consider it one big thing because of, you know, with putting in the sprinklers and all that. So, you know, if tomorrow it's delayed, I don't know what we're gonna do. We're out of money, we're out of options at this point. So we're willing to, like you say, to defer to you, we've given some suggestions. But right now, to go back and start the whole project over, there'll be no money, you're putting us out of business. So I don't know what to do at this point. So I'm here begging you to let us continue. What Jim's saying is like, you know, at the end, if you want us to have the engineer come out and show the elevations and all that, we'll do that. But let us continue, I have people booked for September, I never thought this would take this long, never in a million years. So that's where we're at, thank you.
Regardless of what we decide tonight, the issue with the water needs to be handled. And actually, isn't that the county's responsibility to see that they take care of the issue with the runoff?
That 5,000 square foot threshold is the key to all of this.
Can't refer to the city?
No.
As the county called me.
I called them.
He says it's a city project, the city would have to make fun of the termination on it, they're out of it, that's what the council and the county called me.
That's, the project wasn't required to do stormwater because they were disturbing less than 5,000 square feet, and they weren't creating over 5,000 square feet of additional impervious. I know there were questions about, you know, the condition or the material of what the patio area was, you know, previously. If it was, you know, an old slab that was all crumbly, that may be what it was before it was repoured, you know, to the concrete that we see today. And we've had some issues like this with other properties where there was a driveway that hadn't been used for many years, and it became overgrown, and the question in a situation like that is, is that existing impervious? Because there's still gravel and everything there, but when you look at it, it's, you know, kind of overgrown with weeds or grass. Is that lawn or is that driveway? And that's the kinda thing that we're faced with a little bit here, because part of the area that's covered by the new pavilion roof was a gravel driveway leading to the rear of the barn. So we would look at a driveway as being existing impervious. And we would say, well, the roof over that doesn't change the impervious because it was gravel to begin with. Now, rain falling on a gravel driveway is gonna be different than rain falling on a shingled pitched roof. And we would hope that gutters would address that by channeling the water to, you know, an appropriate spot on the property to discharge. But yes, it changes the nature of the runoff, you know, depending upon what that impervious is, but-
Can that be changed?
The code doesn't speak to that in terms of the site development plan.
Can the water be directed to another area?
And that's what the intent is from what was on the table.
I mean, there's no more water involved with the second barn there. It's just the same amount of water, it's just the way it's being directed.
Right, and that's what the intent of the adding the curbing and adding the gutters to discharge elsewhere on the site. Right now, everything's just running off the roof, going where gravity takes it.
Right.
And the idea is to send more of that out towards Route 194 across the slope on the front of the property than is currently happening. Right now, it's all just running right downhill towards the Farleys' residence.
So how do we address, how do we address this water issue before we can move on to letting those, you know, letting the project move forward? We need to figure out what we're gonna do about the water. Is that something, you're gonna turn it back to the project and say, get your engineers to figure it out? If it is over 5,000, then we need to rethink our process here, what we're gonna do and what we're gonna approve.
That's the question I have, is are we restricted to requiring water management? If it's, can't we put in a clause or addendum to the site plan, even if it's under 5,000 feet, to require storm management? Because this is a unique situation where water's running off and we know it's running off?
I think that you're on the, you said two things, and one is yes and one is no. Let me kinda lay this out, at least how I'm thinking it. I don't think that, it's a fact at this point in time that the site plan that you approved has not been followed.
I agree, I think we all agree on that.
Okay, and so therefore, the typical, if you open the code book and follow what's supposed to be in the code book, says, you can't do anything until you amend the site plan to show us what you're gonna do, we're gonna review it, and then you can go ahead and build it after we approved it, kind of similar to what already happened. And you've heard there's some consequences for doing that. So the applicant is asking you for some exceptions, some favors, some changes, whatever you want, some special consideration. And I think that it's totally fair for this board to say, well, in return for that special consideration, we are going to require you to do some things that you normally wouldn't have to do. Because if you wanna do the things you normally have to do, there's the path to do the normal things. And if you don't wanna take that path for the reasons that are important to them, then these are the things that are important to us. And I think that's what you might have here in front of you. It's just hard for me to take the text version of this and see how it's gonna be done. Because I can't visualize just saying, solve the water problem. Because they might've tried, the neighbors have tried, it seems like there might need to be some professional guidance that we are going to solve the water problem this way. And maybe it's not something you all have to approve, maybe you're saying, solve the water problem and get some kind of drawing, cut sheet to Jim so he can say, yeah, so that when an engineer says that will solve the water problem, the contractor can build it to that. It's just, to me, I mean, I look at it and I hear what Mr. Farley's saying, is that we tried this, and then we tried that. Well, that's what their neighbors are gonna do, we tried this, we tried that. Shouldn't there be some solution that everybody aims for and says, this is what we want done? And it would seem to me that if you can solve the big concern, which you said was water first, that in return for them solving that problem, there are things that you would be able to be more lenient about in the process. Maybe they get something and the city gets something. I would say that, you know, summarize what I just told you, is that if you're not gonna follow the code already, because the code says you need to go back and get a new plan, then you can work anything out you want that you both will agree to. It seems that that's fair.
So we still need to go back to an engineer, 'cause we need a professional.
Don't you, I mean, do you know what the story is?
Well, she said she'd get an engineer.
Right, and she agreed to get an engineer. So if she gets an engineer and gets the calculations, and also with along with that, we need a plan of action.
I mean, that's what I, it's like, let's say the calculations come in at 4,999 square feet. Are you good enough with them saying, see, it's under 5,000, we don't have to do anything about stormwater? Or because we're where we are at this juncture and the situation has gotten here, we don't care that it's 4,999. You're gonna have to maybe not address stormwater as you would under stormwater management, which is quality and quantity and things, but you're gonna have to address runoff, however that's defined.
Right.
So that it's not going to the neighbor's house in a quantity that is more than it was before.
That's right.
Yep.
That's right.
And that's what you're asking the engineer.
You can't dry, you just can't dry the water up when it rains, it's not gonna work.
The point I was on tonight is, we're not gonna give you the authority for to go ahead until we get the water issue resolved.
Were you delegating that to Jim?
We still need, even if we delegate the water issue, we also need to agree on doing an ASBIL with documents and all this other stuff. And I agree with that.
Right, I think that's step one, step two, step three, right.
But the water issue's gotta come first. And we can do that all in one, or we can do all of that to see.
Right.
Can that work with you, Jim?
Right, we need to decide what to do about the runoff, whether you're okay with the pavilion being closed in or not, and how you want to address that.
Well, you'll have to make a decision on the runoff, once you get a report and something. So we can give you the authority to make that decision, right?
You can do that.
We can do that.
I'm understanding that.
I think that's what we should do, just so we don't- I think that's what we should do, just so we don't wait another month or two to run, run this project.
Is there a decision? I mean, I guess what I'm looking at is, there'll be some type of engineer who said, comes up with a, we'll use the word plan, that they submit to Jim, even if it's one page, if this is how we're going to address water runoff immediately and in the long term. And he's going to say, looks good to me, you have an engineering stamp on it, go for it. You're giving him that authority.
Okay, let's just stop there. I'll entertain a motion to that.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second. Further discussion, is this agreeable upon everyone?
I'm confused though. Are we going to be allowed to continue?
We're not that far yet.
Oh, my gosh.
We're handling the water problem first.
Okay.
Anybody else have any comments?
We have to get a special vice.
That's right, right. And once we get it, Jim will make a decision. Okay, all those favor that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That one carried. Okay. Next thing is, are we satisfied?
Enclosure issue.
With the enclosure, are we satisfied with doing documents and doing ASBIL at the end or something like that? So they can move forward as, as they need to?
Not right now.
As they need to, meaning once Jim gets that stuff, we're giving Jim authority. Once we, once we say we agree on the enclosure, that covers that issue.
Let me say one thing. Are we sure that there's, all this is to commercial standards?
That's it.
Because I'm, I'm just saying, if you have a building, are the plans stamped by an architect?
They have stamped architect plans.
I, I know they've...
If the plans are stamped by an architect, they can't, they're not acceptable to commercial. That's step one. Now, you can give them the stamp, but I, I don't want any, I wouldn't want to be as part of any building being built that has questionable structural value to it. Because then we're, we're dealing with other people's lives.
I, I have, I have structural engineering, that all went to the county, they have all that.
Done by an, by an architect.
But is the drawings stamped?
Yes.
Is that stamped, if a stamp, if a stamp, you gotta, you gotta something that says that everything on that plan is acceptable to them.
Yeah, well, now see, that, that makes the changes too, a little bit too. Because what he stamped is not what we have.
Right, the...
No, it's just the pavilion.
Right, the pavilion...
Just the pavilion.
Well, that's what we're trying to get a, move forward on, is pavilion. Because now it's not a pavilion, it's a room. It's part of the building.
And that's the stamp, that's, they're related to stamping the whole lot of the other module.
So, how does the county look at that?
You're still going to do something regardless.
Well, yeah.
With the water before you can approve anything.
Well, we already came with a water situation. We turned that over to Jim.
I'm hoping it's all going to happen at the same time, commission, like they're, we're doing this as the plan, when we're done, all of it.
Right.
The, the question I have is just a kind of theoretical is, if you're a contractor who's building and enclosing this, whatever, whatever the project is now, don't you have to have plans to follow? Right, I mean, if, if I'm being hired to enclose the pavilion, I'm just not going to show up and figure it out, I'm going to have to have plans to follow.
Isn't that what they submitted to the county? Didn't the county have?
We have meetings, if I may, I'm sorry to turn around, but like I said, once again, it's not typical because we have a meet with the county at all times as we went through the process of whether of a tent or of a pavilion. And they sat there and they kind of guided us through the process of what we can and cannot have. We have a structural engineer who, who did the, the plan for, for the pavilion. And now, you know, he's done another one to do the wind loads, the cricket for the snow load, all that stuff has been addressed and satisfied the county. So, that's what we've done.
Well, the county wouldn't give a permit if didn't have an engineer to do the choices.
Right.
Right, Jim?
And the pavilion did go through that.
The pavilion did.
The pavilion did go through that, right. The...
But not...
The filling in of the walls is what, from my understanding is...
Okay, so they might have...
When the county got involved in that, it was more field changes.
But Jim, didn't you not even know that you were enclosing it until I called you?
Not, well, a, a commission member had pointed it out to me as well.
Yeah.
Right, and that, that's why we are where we are now.
I don't know where to make a decision on this. I don't, I think I'm kind of like you, Jim.
I, I know when I had work done to my office, I had to have a plan.
Yeah.
And I wanted a plan because that was what the contractor bid and that's what I knew the contractor was putting the studs so many places and it was a plan. It would seem that they have to have that. I mean, they must have it already, but that should be submitted to the county for review and to you all.
Did you have a set of drawings? Did you present a set of drawings like this to the county?
We have for the, for the pavilion. They said that we didn't need to have full architectural plans. We have structural engineering plans that were submitted at the...
For the pavilion.
For the pavilion.
Right.
Not...
Yeah, no, 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 and also to do the enclosure, I have them. That's what we're waiting on. That's where the, the, the whole thing got a little funny because nobody thought the building was always sufficient to enclose it. It got a little convoluted there a little. So, we apologize for that in a letter. But now, the county does have it with, with, because they wanted to know the wind shear and the cricket and all that stuff to combine the building and enclose it. They have all of it. And I can get your copies of that tomorrow, it's easy.
Well, that's the, the question is, is, does the town have it? Has it ever been submitted to the town?
No, because we just assumed that the pavilion was a good quantity to submit. We apologize for that. We did not know that.
Well, the town doesn't get any permits anyway. It's all done through Carroll County.
Right.
And transferred from, from Carroll County up to the Tontown.
Well, I don't just, I mean, just a bit, if you have plans and you're asking for moving forward and you have plans to do something, I, I mean, I guess that, and I, what Jay's getting to is, is they should be here. We should be, we should have them to look at, I mean, to, to know what you want.
I guess I'm, I'm confused because the same thing is, I came in to Jim, I was probably recalling what I think to change the permit to commercial, and he gave me the permit. I have that permit. Then I went to them and we, we had all these meetings and somewhere along the line with the enclosure, I, that just didn't happen, but the pavilion, you know, we, we have a permit from that and we showed you on the site plan. So, we just didn't think it was, because it's not really a building because we're not really tempering it. That's, that was the discussion. So, that's what's called, I don't know. I mean, it's just something that...
Legally, what do we need to do? I mean, we can't make a decision without something in front of us having that.
I mean, we can get closer to it, but we need to parse down on exactly.
Right.
If somebody came in and said, I wanted to build an addition or an enclosure, I wanted to do something to my house, that's not a huge big deal, but it's a deal, maybe you all would deal with this, or maybe it would just be something that the city gave a zoning certificate, which they take to the county and they say zoning certificate A matches Plan A and that's it. It would seem to me that the plan that you have right now is not the plan that's being built. We're saying pavilion, but it's not a pavilion anymore.
You're right. It's a different plan.
So, I would still think that there's still a path forward that they can proceed, but they need to get these drawings that show an enclosed space to the city and through the county so that we know that what they're going to build out there is now towards these plans. Because that's the part that I see keeps getting slippery is that there are plans out there, but nobody's building to the plans and the plans keep changing. And I think you can't move the goalpost. It's, this is what we want to build and these are the permits that are necessary and we built it towards that. And even though it's history that that, the pavilion was one way, right now, I think you can re-zero that. You can get the plans to Jim, you can get the plans to the county, which is what they said they did. And now you'll know, this is what you're supposed to be seeing when something out there. Now, if Jim looks at it and says, this is not, this is not good, or, I mean, I don't know what it would be, he has to be able to put the brakes on it and not issue the zoning certificate, more or less. I mean, we're talking, again, making it up as you go. But I still think there's a path forward. I know the applicant's concerned about stopping. It would seem to me that what we're talking about isn't going to stop the actual construction, it's just going to define what the construction is. Because you don't know that. And no one can come in and look at the plans because they're not here.
I have...
Well, the fact...
I'm just saying I have a...
I mean, I get that you understand what's going on, but no one else does. And when you came before the board over the past year, those plans were never submitted for anybody to look at. Those actual plans, as it's, maybe pieces of them were, but not all of them. And that's the issue that we have here is not everybody is literally on the same page.
Well, the, the county, may I, I'm not being...
Sure.
This is the pavilion's plan and the county said all you have to do was just, you know, show the enclosure on the original plan. That's all they wanted.
I, I understand that. However, and, and I'm not really trying to be argumentative, but you're not building the pavilion.
I'm not.
You're not building the pavilion. The pavilion that was approved by...
The pavilion is existing, yeah.
Yeah, you're not building that.
Correct.
You're building something different that...
Putting sides on it.
It's different then, right? It's not the same.
Well, we're closing it for several reasons.
But it's different.
Right.
And this group hasn't seen the different plan. I mean, I, I mean, in a very strict sense, you said A.
Right.
And this is AB.
But, but the county has seen it and I apologize. I didn't know you all made the scene.
And that's what, I think what we're trying to do is fix that right now.
Right, and I, and I have it, and they have it. And they talked to Jim on the phone the other day and that's why I can...
I get, I mean, again, I'm not trying to be argumentative, but what I, I guess what I'm trying to get us to with this group is, we're glad the county's involved, but you need them to say yes. And if they don't see the permits and they don't see the plans, it doesn't matter what the county says. So, we're trying to get to a point where what you have can be distributed to this group so they can be comfortable in saying, when a neighbor comes, what's happening out here? And they can pull the plan out and say, this is what's happening. And what happened now is they pulled the plan out and what they saw out there and what's on the plan is not the same.
But, and not to be argumentative, not to be argumentative, it's still, but it's a roof and the roof was through.
But that's not the rules.
I, I, I'm not, I'm just trying to be on this project. I'm going to have to the sides, you know, that's a little bit...
I, I completely understand, but you could, you know, tell me that there's something out there that has four legs and it looks like a horse, but if I get closer, it's really a zebra. They're not the same. And that's what this is. It's not a horse, it's a zebra.
So, the county with every real pavilion has no, they've never had a pavilion this big. So, when I spoke to them, they said, there is no guidelines because they've never had a pavilion this big. But now it's a different structure, so what, do your points tell you that?
The plan you have there, that shows the, the walls and everything else.
Well, this is what you...
We can't do that.
I don't know what we do either. I mean, if we do anything, we're putting pressure on Jim to make a decision on his own and that's not right either.
It depends.
That shouldn't be. So, I suggest to bring it back next month with, with a plan, with the, with a site plan. They don't have to revise site plan, just amend it.
Some structure on this.
Yeah, we need an amended site plan.
I agree. Fix the water.
Water, yeah.
It's a plan.
Yeah, amended. So, why don't somebody put that in a motion and let's carry us through.
I agree, says they stop, I'll give you that motion.
Yes, exactly. They just wanted to see the choices, the cricket, that kind of stuff. Because they said the walls are not just, they're just on top of existing for the walls.
He probably couldn't afford it.
We can't help that.
So, we have what essentially modified structural drawings for the pavilion that show what the county required to connect it to the barn.
And to put the walls better, we should have this one.
Right, and then there's, there's notation with regard to, to wind loads, snow loads, uh, construction loads. So, they basically had the engineer go back through and modify the plans to address the structural aspects of enclosing it. So, that's, that's what we know now. So, it still isn't, it still isn't a picture of an enclosed pavilion, but it addresses the structural aspects of enclosing it. So, it's a little more than we had intended to go, but it's still not quite what you're asking for.
You got a stamp on it?
Yes.
Who's it?
Yeah. Yes, it's stamped and signed.
So, since I don't want to be here until midnight, can I make a motion that we require a revised site plan for next month before we move forward?
Can you make that a motion? Is there a second to that motion?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
I don't want to take you to that.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. A motion was made and second to require modif, what'd you say, modified site plan to this commission?
Correct. Do we need it?
You should have drawings that are those drawings that show what it looks like from the street, what color it's going to be, the stuff that you all are all interested.
The normal...
Right.
Okay. You should have something in front of you that looks like that.
Okay. I'm hoping for discussion.
Who will do that, Jim?
Our engineer.
Just, just before you vote, you know, we can't afford that. That's like architectural, you want major architectural drawings because he wants color, he wants all that. We haven't enough money for that. So, I don't know what we're going to do. I am sorry that you, you can't see us clear of just, you know, the structural. So, I don't know. I'm going to have to go back to Victoria. And now it sounds like we're shutting down a project. So, if you, you know, you need all these drawings, I mean, that's going to be months because you won't wait for another month. I have broads that were going to come in September, but I don't know. I guess, I don't know. I have no backup to you. I don't know what to do.
Okay. Motion was made and second to require modified site plan. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Carry it. Jim, was that all you had on your report?
Yes, it is.
Jay?
Yeah, the only thing I can add is a follow-up onto the Sools. They're taking this project very seriously. They scheduled a meeting. I met with the attorney to talk about how an annexation would go. I mean, there's a lot involved and a lot of lead time. And there's a lot of moving parts that get beyond just what it's going to look like and the things you're usually concerned with that set that up. They want to move ahead at a normal pace, not anything unrealistic, but the issue that was suggested with them is that perhaps your group would benefit from a presentation like the council did, where it would simply be informational because you couldn't agree to anything because it's not annexed, it's not in town, but they could hear your comments because it's very good when they hear it. And you said some tonight that would be good for them to hear. And those comments shape how the annexation might go, meaning access issues and, you
know, road issues and intersection issues and traffic issues. It's important for them to know. Most people like to know what is expected of them before they get into the process, and they will do anything you ask, as long as they know upfront. It's the last minute is the problem. So, I haven't really worked with the city manager yet to talk about it, because it's too preliminary, but it's a serious thing that they want to move forward on.
Claire?
Um, I have two updates. Um, the first is a good update. M.D., M.D. approved the, um, tri- and E update over email, so we're just waiting for a, a formal letter from them, and then pop the plan out for distribution. Um, and the second update, we have a public hearing on the bike path master plan during planning commission, why, on the September 17th.
September 17th?
Yes. The, the Tuesday, um, day meeting.
Is that it? Okay. Anyone else have anything from the floor? George?
I have a big concern.
Okay.
My concern is what's going to happen to the traffic in Toney Town 15 and 20 years down the road. Uh, the state expressed a concern when they started, when they started to talk about the Buller Farm years ago, and we had talks and comments on the square, what we were going to do about the square problem. Now we're coming along with Sewell. One of these days, we'll have Carpenter, and we'll have, um, Huffman Farm, and we're going to have Becky, um, uh, Becky's Farm down here by the, um, going down to the old pump house.
Okay.
But the point is, we had a, an extended Antrim Boulevard on the state schedule years ago, and they took it off. Now, we've got to consider a bypass. We're going to need a bypass around this town. We're talking 15, 20 years. It's time to think about it. I'd like to have it as part of the minutes, so that it's not forgotten. That's all I want to bring up.
Clara, the state highway used to have those meetings once a year down at the county office building. Does that still happen?
Um, the tour? Yes, I think that needs, we have the date for pre-tour, tour is still here. I think that's usually what you attend is the pre-tour.
Usually, usually staff attends the pre-tour, and then the elected officials attend the, the formal tour when, when the, the state, when the secretary actually comes. Usually it's, it's, um, his or her staff go around beforehand on the pre-tour, staff kind of hash out, "Here's what we think our elected officials are going to, you know, highlight when, when the secretary comes," and, and then usually the electeds go for the actual tour. Um, we did, on the pre-tour last year, I advised that I thought our mayor would speak to the need for the park to be completed, and, you know, traffic volume concerns and, and level of service with the intersection here at the square. Um, you know, again, we, we've been bumped off the, the Baltimore Metro Regional Plan for that right now, so that's our first step, is to try to, you know, while we, we try to retain like at least a, a, you know, a one phrase reference in the priority letter, or we say something at the pre-tour every year, just to try to keep it on their radar screen, you know, we need to get back on that long range plan to get the ball rolling again.
Yeah, we have a governor now that reaches out and visits communities and territories. He can get us back on the plan in his next four years if we work with him. He can put us back if we work with him.
Anything else from you, sir?
Jim?
Yeah.
Okay, it looks like next scheduled meeting, August 26th. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
What was it?
Second?
Second.
All right, he's got it.
Carry.